I would like to stand up and say I'd like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for today?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Call for a vote.
Tippit.
Aye.
Deeman.
Aye.
Bull's?
Aye.
Kelly DeLong. Um, and, oh, sorry Tracy, I didn't mean to cut you off. Before we get started, I know I told, uh, this is DeLong or...
DeLong.
DeLong, I am so sorry, okay. Ms. DeLong, and we kinda had a conversation and I told her I was gonna put it out to know, but here, so everyone heard it, you know, um, uh, she's coming here to talk about the amendment for ordinance 37, which is talking about like, essentially the dangerous animal, vicious animal, animal at large ordinance, um, and given like our Iowa codes, especially opening meetings, whatever said on the agenda, you know, we have to stick to, and also given that anything that's currently happening, and I'm not saying that there is anything happening in the works, I'm just saying that, uh, we have to refrain from backs on the ordinance, because in this ordinance itself, I don't know if you guys saw that, that even after the order is, uh, inputted from the sheriff, that there's an appeal process, and the appeal for, you guys, you guys are the appeal court, essentially, to hear the thing. And so we can't talk specifics without the other person here because of this little thing called the Constitution. And I explained that, um, to Ms. DeLong, and, um, we had an understanding with that, and to, you know, um, yeah, we just had a conversation about that and how we have to kinda really be careful in that territory. Um, and so, anyway, she is here to, uh, submit a proposal for amendment to 37, and there is a process to it, um, and I don't have the exact procedures down because we haven't had one of these things yet, and you guys know how new I am, and, uh, um, I just know it has to be at least two meetings, and then there has to be a draft that has to be, I think, the lead public notice, I have to go check on that, but, anyway, I won't...
There's three.
Is it, yeah, I said, okay, three, okay.
There's three hearings, one can be waived, but it has to be publicized in the paper, but that's why I, when I put it on the agenda, I didn't say discuss approve, I just said discuss, because at this point, nothing can be approved because the ordinance process.
Yeah, and that's what I essentially was kinda describing as well, there's a procedure, it's 331, 302-6, essentially kinda weighs it down, and so, anyway, going forth, we're gonna make sure we adhere to that, and, um, yeah, anyway, Ms. DeLong, the floor is yours.
All right, I am here today to propose and discuss an amendment to ordinance 37. I believe that this is important because we need a behavior-based approach to animal control and not a breed. Ordinance 37 stands as one of the most outdated and unjust animal laws in the state of Iowa. It punishes dogs based on breed rather than behavior, promoting fear instead of fairness. This kind of legislation discriminates against responsible pet owners, but also fails to truly protect the public, as you will see in the next slides. It is time to revise the ordinance, not just for the sake of our animals, but to ensure safety, fairness, and the well-being of our children and our community. Am I allowed to talk about this?
We're gonna play videos pertaining to the case.
I'm not playing videos.
Yeah, um, you can talk about the language of the statute and stuff, okay? Yep, just don't play the video, please.
Okay, so, in the language of the sta-, in the language of the statute, trespassing is not considered a punishable offense. I'm here today to propose that trespassing, consistent trespassing of known animals on a consistent basis who are also off-leash, uncollared, and unidentified in other people's property is dangerous and harmful. Research in real-world cases show that dogs involved in one serious or fatal attack are likely to repeat that behavior, especially if the underlying causes such as aggression, coordinated killing, inadequate ability to control, or owner negligence are not adequately When animals have to cross three fence lines and a creek to get to your backyard and potentially kill an animal on your deck several, several times, three known in videos, that I feel When people repeatedly allow their animals in video documented form to trespass, not properly contained, and neighbors help them to try to contain them before anything serious happens, and it's a repeated situation, I believe that should be a cause for some sort of citation within the ordinance. Ordinance 37 can leave dogs at large who could still kill at any moment with a pattern of killing behavior, a pattern of illegal trespassing, a pattern of owner negligence, can leave them off-leash in our backyard, your backyard, and with the potential to kill without being removed. Problems with ordinance 37: There is no mandatory action after one attack. The focus is on breed, not behavior. It's inconsistently enforced due to ordinance ambiguity. My proposed amendment to ordinance 37 is that mandatory custody and disposition should be handled following one fatal attack. Immediate custody of an animal, if an animal kills without provocation, a domesticated animal while it's off its owner's property or while unlawfully on another person's property, the animal shall be immediately taken into custody by animal control or law enforcement for evaluation. Two, we have to make sure that those animals are then verified and classified following a verified fatal attack via credible witness. Video, photos, repeated videos, repeated photos, or veterinary confirmation, this shall result in a classification as that animal as vicious and dangerous. Then, that animal needs to be disposed, either euthanized humanely, if it's identified as a, by a veterinarian that it poses a threat, or placed under strict quarantine in an off-site facility, or transferred to a secure facility. And this should be the owner's responsibility. Owners should be bearing the costs related to seizure, housing, evaluation, disposition, law enforcement, right? We're all paying that as tax, taxpayers, law enforcement response. Why are we paying for law enforcement response of these animals continuing to trespass into other people's yards or kill their animals? It's, it's nonsense. Rationale for the change: Public safety. Residents have the right to feel safe in their own property without fear of fatal attacks from neighboring animals. Animal welfare. We need to allow vicious animals to, we don't need to allow vicious animals to remain in the community, it puts small children, I have neighbors, I have neighbors that are little one-year-olds that live right behind other neighbors. What if that's accidentally seen as a small animal? Pets and adults livestock, whatever is at risk, this is silly that we're, we're requiring two fatal attacks. The killing of animals in front of children, they could be in front of anyone, right? We're, we're allowing this to occur for what? Law enforcement involvement, they're having to spend money on resources to constantly go to people's houses who are experiencing consistent off-leash problems. Why are these people not being fined? Why are they not experiencing the stress that they're putting their neighbors under, the law enforcement under, and our community under? Why is that all on the victim? Animal welfare considerations: While responsible pet ownership is encouraged, animals that kill pose a continued threat. The proposed change allows for due process while prioritizing the safety of other animals and humans. Five, consistency with broader legal trends. This approach mirrors research policies in other counties and other states that aim to balance animal rights with community safety. We're willing to take pitfalls out of the community that are like kind and safe, but we have other animals off-leash killing multiple times, and we do nothing? I don't understand. Benton County taxpayers should not have to bear the cost of resource and time of irresponsible, negligent dog owners. This proposed amendment seeks to enhance public safety, provide clarity for animal control and law enforcement, and aligns with evolving expectations regarding the responsible, responsible regulation of dangerous animals. I respectfully urge the Benton County Board of Supervisors to consider this revision and initiate a review process to incorporate it into chapter 37 of the Code of Ordinances. And I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. DeLong. Uh, I, I've got a question for you.
Yes.
Usually like, uh, 'cause the attorney's gonna be the one drafting it, what counties are you looking, did you find? 'Cause like, it helps that I can look at other ordinances.
Well, Lynn County right next to us, um, has a great ordinance, um, one fatal attack and dogs are removed within hours.
Okay.
Um, it doesn't matter what breed kills the animal, they're removed after, immediately after the killing.
Okay, so Lynn's probably the best.
I would say Lynn is, is the best one, just because it partners to us, and I think being able to mirror it, um, we have a relationship between Benton and Lynn, and I think it, it could, um, foster an easier transition to a new ordinance.
Okay, perfect, then, that was my big main question, okay?
Yeah, yeah, any other questions?
Could you get us a copy of their ordinance?
I sure can, and I will, uh, just email it out in PDF, and, and, uh, yeah.
Any more questions? Do you want to get her information that I could get from her if you guys want to put this back on the agenda so I can be in contact with her, or do you, how do you guys wanna proceed with this?
We have her email, I have her email.
I, I do as well, but I didn't know. You tell me how you want me to communicate.
Email would be best.
Okay.
Just because like, uh, it's like, everyone tends on track with dates and stuff.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right, thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Ms. DeLong.
Thank you.
I do have one quick question. Animal control process, uh, we don't have a dog catcher in town or nothing, we have nothing. What do you, what, who does that?
Just the sheriff's department? Is that, is it?
We do use Cedar Valley Domain Society, um, on certain cases, it's on case-by-case basis, but no, we do not have an in-house animal control in Benton County at this time.
Did we ever?
We did.
And what happened then? I'm just questioning, I'm just curious why we don't have...
Well, I believe the dog powned outside of Benton and closed it up, so that kinda took away our resources as far as, I don't wanna say storage, but confining them and, you know, keeping them, the animals.
So you're saying that maybe that might be something to consider, guys? Getting that going in.
I have a comment in regard to the ordinance, but I'm not sure if you'd like it to wait until after in the public comments time, or if you'd like me to make that now?
If it's short, you can do it now.
It's approximately three minutes, it's just written here, okay. Um, Board of Supervisors, my name is Leslie Marriott, and I am the sister of Kelly DeLong, who just addressed you. I'm speaking in support of amending ordinance 37. Our family has endured multiple fatal dog attacks, unfortunately by the same dogs and belonging to the same owners. Responding officers cited ordinance 37 as the reason for their limited actions, revealing serious gaps in its language and enforcement. Years ago, I witnessed an unprovoked and brutal attack on my neighbor's dog by four other dogs that lived next door to them. I heard her screams, and I saw the devastating aftermath firsthand. That moment profoundly shaped how I view this issue. I reported the attack to Lynn County Animal Control, and within hours, the dogs were removed. That swift response prevented further harm to both people and animals. Benton County should be empowered to act this promptly and decisively. As it stands, ordinance 37 requires two separate attacks within 12 months. This ordinance requires a second attack before actionable steps can be taken. This delays critical intervention and puts the public at unnecessary risk. A non-fatal first attack doesn't guarantee there won't be, and hoping for a different outcome isn't a strategy. Research and experience show that repeated attacks are common, and that severity can escalate. Dogs that attack once, especially fatally, are likely to do so again if underlying issues like aggression, lack of training, or owner negligence are not addressed. We need clear legal language that empowers authorities to act on the first verified incident, especially when there's a clear threat to safety. Enforceable standards are needed to promote responsible ownership, particularly in cases where dogs do repeatedly run at large. Loose dogs pose serious risks to the community, especially children, seniors, and other animals. They strain the resources of law enforcement and frustrate communities when there's no clear path to resolution. Without clear standards, authorities can't respond effectively, and the burden falls on those impacted. My family has lived through that trauma, and others shouldn't have to. Ordinance 37 should include stronger, clearer definitions, penalties for repeat offenses, and tools for proactive enforcement. Owners must be held accountable too for ongoing violations. Without these changes, public safety remains at risk. In closing, I don't think this is about punishing animals or their owners, it's about protecting this community, its residents, and their beloved pets. It's about acting before another tragedy strikes and not waiting. I urge you to take meaningful action and amend ordinance 37 to reflect the seriousness of these risks and the need for stronger enforcement. And I thank you for your time and for your consideration and hearing us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to just say a few words as well. I am a Benton County resident and Kelly DeLong's mother, and I wanted to just say I grew up in a farm in northeast Iowa, and I think there's been kind of a cultural shift in, uh, the way that we handle, or that we should handle these kind of, uh, difficult situations. My dad, if we had a stray dog that came on the farm, boom, it was down. But I think now that our culture has kind of shifted, we have a lot of people who have lived in urban areas, who are moving out to rural communities, who are, uh, reluctant to pull out a gun and shoot at someone else's animal, uh, even if it's on their property. And there can be many reasons for that. They have children, and they don't, you know, they have their own, uh, parenting style that they, that they follow. And so I think putting the onus on the, the landowner to shoot these animals is probably not the best way to handle it. It has been in the past when Iowa was more of a rural community, but it's, it's changing. The dynamics of our state are changing, and I think Benton County may need to have to change with those, these shifts in our culture. So I would just encourage you to consider that change to the, uh, ordinance, yes, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Will look into this? Give the help of Derek. He'll give what Lynn County, what happened.
Yeah.
I'm curious what they have to say on this issue.
I am too, um, because like, it's, it's a nice roadmap, because, uh, um, 'cause one thing too, whenever you do an ordinance, you have to then do like constitutionally, constitutional research and stuff too, and so, um, if they have one in place, you know, it could be a good roadmap to help us what to do, so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Kevin and Susan Hagan are requesting change the use of approximately one acre of land to allow for the addition of residents to an existing shop building. This site, it's located approximately two miles west-northeast of Keystone, in section nine of Hayne Township. And this site, it's located on a 4.57 acre parcel that is owned by the applicants. There's an existing dwelling on the property where the applicants reside, and that dwelling will remain, so this will be an additional dwelling on the site. This entire parcel, it's considered high-quality farmland as it has a cornsability rating of 95. However, it is part of the original farmstead and has not been in agricultural production since at least the adoption of our ordinance. There is an existing driveway that'll be utilized to access this residence, and 13th Avenue, a county rock road, has an annual average daily traffic count of 25 vehicles. The shop currently, uh, does have plumbing and utilizes a holding tank for its sewage. With the addition of the residents, a secondary treatment system would need to be installed following the existing septic tank. And that site visit has already been conducted, and it's been determined that a containerized media filter will be needed following the existing septic tank. And there is also a private water well located southeast of the existing dwelling that'll be utilized for this new residence as well. In this site, it's surrounded by row crops on all sides, and four notices were sent out to adjacent property owners, and legal notices were published in the official newspapers of Benton County as required by the ordinance. And we did not receive any comments regarding this request. This proposal, it's located on a site with high cornsability rating, but it is part of the original farmstead and not in agricultural production, and there's no intent of this area being separated from the parcel that it's located on. And this proposal should not have any negative impact on surrounding farm operations. And the Hagens, yeah, they're not here today, uh, they were on vacation, um, so they're not able to be here today.
On the map that they, that has the, uh, the addition drawn on it, it looks like it extends beyond the original property line?
On, that's just on the assessor's.
So it's not really gonna like, it's just like a lawn right now?
Yeah, it'll be on, yep, that lawn that's there, yep.
So it's not being farmed, it's not coming out of production?
No.
No.
And I get a motion, either to approve or deny? I would make a motion to approve the, uh, land exchange for Kevin and Susan Hagan, partial aid, northeast one quarter or southeast one quarter, section nine. I would second that motion.
I will call for a vote.
Tippit.
Uh, Deeman. Aye. Bull's. Aye.
Thank you.
How about number four, going back to that?
I read them, I didn't see anything that needed to be corrected. I also had the opportunity to read the man, it's gonna be one of the things appears for me. I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, approval of the minutes? I'll second that motion.
I have a game.
Call for a vote.
Tippit.
Aye.
Deeman. Aye.
Bull's. Aye. Donated sick time.
You guys got the email and everything, so I don't, I just have what was given to repeat email. That was sent out on Friday, I believe.
Yep. I had no problem with it.
I had no problem, I'll say. Quite a gesture.
Good idea.
That's pretty nice, so I'm, I'm good with it, so.
I was gonna say, I think we can say, uh, the individual's name, who is, it's just, it kinda reflects what, uh, Dave did. Uh, Nancy retired on Friday, she has accumulated sick time, and she is donating to the person that is requesting the sick time, and that's why she was asking for your formal approval for that. So, because that would be 750 hours.
I would make the motion, uh, for Nancy Jordan to donate her, uh, sick time bank on her retirement to another county employee.
I'll second that motion. Call for a vote.
Tippit.
Aye.
Deeman. Aye. Bull's.
Aye. And about courthouse lawn for Benton Park, we gotta commit here.
You guys have a copy of that as well?
It's all the way up to Halloween. People party in the park and Halloween.
Do you leave this every year?
Yep.
There's never been any problems, huh?
No.
I think it would be.
No, I will say that in hard direct, they take very good care of the courthouse lawn when they do that.
I would make the motion to approve the, uh, application for the use of courthouse ground for Benton Park and Rec. I'll second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippit.
Aye.
Deeman. Aye. Bull's. Aye.
Just got resolution 2544, um, we've pardoned a couple sergeants in, back in the jail. Uh, Jacyra and Keith Mall were both promoted to sergeants. Effective today. They're coming in the same rate of pay.
Okay, same rate. Just classification.
We have promotional money set aside in the next budget here, but right now, they remain the same.
Okay. Get a motion to approve the promotion?
I'll make the motion to approve the motion of Keith Mall and I'm still like hitting Josira's last name right.
That's why I didn't say it. Or attempted.
I'll second.
Soul sack?
It's close.
Don't ask me spelling it.
Okay, that's second. Okay.
Tippit.
Aye.
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 The Josira has black hair?
Yes.
But they call her red.
So, yeah, we'll pass that around, because we'll, we have two copies of the resolution that, so. So I would seal it too.
Was that a G?
No, you guys have.
Law contract.
Well, the resignation.
We have a resignation of Crystal Northrup. She was our part-time custodian. She resigned, personal reasons, family issues, I guess, so. That was effective 5/31.
We get a motion to.
Okay. I would make the motion to acknowledge the resignation of Mr. Martin, of the Benton County Sheriff's Office.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Call for a vote.
Tippit.
Aye.
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 Now you got four law.
Four more 2080 agreement slash law enforcement contracts. You got Van Horn, Norway, Blairstown, and New Hall.
Is that all of them then? You still got a couple left.
We received one of them this morning from Keystone. The only holdout right now is Mount Auburn. Mount Auburn is, well, this time they're chosen not to redo it, so I don't know, we're not sure what's going to happen. I just sent a response email to them, just waiting to hear back. I don't know why you say that, that's all of them. So the only thing we're still waiting on is Mount Auburn law enforcement contract, and then the law enforcement liaison and dispatch fees from Urbana and Benton both asked for a little more time to meet with the board. Been in contact with them, but haven't received the signed contract yet.
Yep, so.
The auditor's office is filing the 2080s, from my understanding, with the Secretary of State.
We filed those with the Secretary of State.
Make a motion to approve the law contracts from the City of Van Horn, City of Blairstown, City of Norway, and the City of New Hall.
The way we did it in the past, we sent the money.
Oh, okay. Okay, so the.
That's recorded in the minutes.
For the town. So for the City of Van Horn, they will pay a total annual amount of $50,700. The City of Blairstown will pay a total amount of $33,800. The City of Norway will pay an annual amount of $33,800. And the City of New Hall will pay an annual amount of $50,700.
Okay, I see the motion.
I'll make a second to that.
Okay. Call for a vote.
Tippit.
Aye.
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 That's all.
How you doing?
Thank you.
Have a good day, Dylan.
Okay, what do we got next? 9:45. Time dial, 10 o'clock time dial. Uh, we got 10 minutes, so. What can you tell me, Gina, on this number 11? Discuss, approve, closing, changes to HR department.
Ron told me to put it on there.
I had that. As for our budgeting process, we had decided to close, close the HR department, and Ray said we should bring it to a board meeting for an official vote.
Little discussion on that. Why close it? Don't you think you need an independent bunch to oversee, just in case there's a rift in somebody's department between them and their boss? Who handles that now? We're thinking about, we're gonna hire that out. Hire the HR department out completely? No.
No, not completely.
Hire the rift out. Where are we gonna do that? You can, there's a company out there that handled this. A mediation.
We have two, two departments that have to follow their union contract if there's any troubles. If there's anything else, it would first go.
So usually, the way, and Ray and I talked a little bit this morning, you know, usually a lot of the times when we have like complaints and whatnot, at least like the ones we've had, majority of them, you know, they go to EOR. I always get their names screwed up. Hopkins and Hubner.
Hopkins.
Yeah, I always get that screwed up. And, because like, that's our insurance, it takes a hold of that. And they usually take a lot of those complaints, you know, and do the interviews and all that kind of stuff, because we're already kind of paying for that.
But you have some experience or some training?
I, well, I mean, like, just, just, so like, I'll just be frank, like, you know, there's like, there's compliance stuff that we get questions asked of in like, especially the federal rules and stuff that we have given, like, say, guidance and stuff on and how it's applied and what's involved in it, you know? And, and honestly, that's really like, for us, you know, that serves like the purpose, because like, the way I've like, always described, like, say, the civil side to people is like, we're almost like the in-house attorney, you know, where we provide those guidance and, and compliance type stuff to departments and whatnot. And that also includes, like, employment stuff, like, that, you know, it's just like open records requests, that's considered like guidance and kind of stuff, like open meetings, like handing those right, because that's guidance, that's no different than, say, like, kind of stuff there. I think the big thing is like, where does these like complaints and investigations go? And the way I understood is, insurance takes on most of it, if not all. I think there was one time, I think we had to hire out Duncan and Green to do something. And I have no clue what that was even with, but that's just another law firm, and I don't know if it's had something to do with like, we had to do that because of a conflict with with the insurance firm, et cetera. But as far as like that stuff goes, the big stuff, you know, that's why we have that.
The day-to-day operations will go back under the auditor?
Why?
I believe that's in the Iowa code.
That's why, from what I understand, that's why you went back and went to try to line up somebody as an HR department, because there was some issues. So here we are again, going right back to what you had before.
The day-to-day.
I think it's a mistake. I think you need, I think you need an HR department. I think you need to have one, because that way you can call some things before they really blow up. Because if you start going down the road, you will get in either attorneys, or you start getting these insurance companies and things, and things blow up. You've already had that happen four times.
What we're talking about is, all those complaints don't go to our office, if you heard correctly.
Right, but the HR department needs to, it needs to be involved in a lot of that, because they could stop a lot of things and help with that.
But we don't handle that. That would be what he's saying is outsourced. We are handling the insurance, is what we're talking about. So you're saying, we're not capable of handling the property insurance, the life insurance, and all of that? That's what you just said.
I'm talking about issues in departments as far as personnel issues.
And that's what he said we're not doing.
But then you're talking about getting rid of the HR department. That's what you, that's what you just said.
The department, yes, but if there was a need for some outside help that the HR department would do, then that would be done on an as-needed basis.
So it's all about money?
Pretty well. Absolutely.
So that's what it is. That's what it was about to do, is money.
Yes.
Okay. That's just what I want to be here.
We're saving money. Trying.
So, do you want to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we close our current HR department. Effective, uh... Last day of June, 2025. I couldn't.
30?
June the 3rd, I couldn't think if we should do it that way, or have it effective July 1. Does it?
I mean, either ways.
Same difference.
Yeah. You have last day's period, if, I mean, honestly, July 1st, it's fine too, because that's starting off the fiscal year.
Well, we'll want July 1. I'd second that.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippit.
Aye.
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 Are you gonna notify all these other people where they need to go then, if they gotta go get ahold of somebody outside? They will contact the auditor's office, and the auditor's office will line it up between the complaint.
The county attorney's office and.
Insurance, I mean.
But I mean, all the personnel in the court house, anywhere, got an idea where they gotta go, if they gotta go somewhere.
Yes.
First step is to auditor's office. And they will notify the next, and when they step out, they're out of there.
They, they will handle the, the day-to-day, the paperwork, the forms, when you bring somebody on and all that stuff, will go through the auditor's office. And then after that, it goes to the county attorney, and if the county attorney, they do their, what would you say?
As far as like, well, depends, like, if it's like complaints, then, you know, of course, like, then we notify the insurance company. I mean, that's the step regardless, because they have to know. Regardless, they do, because that's a claim.
They would, they would give our legal advice on how to proceed.
Yeah. There we go.
And the actual call to the insurance company would be through the county attorney's office. They would be like the gatekeeper in this situation to the access. So we just don't have employees calling these insurance companies, or an outside on the county's behalf, that will all go through the county attorney's office.
So what happens if it's against the, I'm not saying it will, but if it's against the attorney's office, where does?
It just goes to insurance directly.
Go straight to insurance?
And then we would go, it would come here, and we would go straight to insurance. Our next step is to make sure that our two union contracts are somehow in lines, are handled also. Make sure all that is in the same process.
Okay. 9:45, we're close enough, I believe. Start with this. MHDS ECR, discuss and approve MOU. Go ahead and send it.
Board supervisors?
Hi, this is Diane Peterson. You guys are gonna have, on your meeting next Tuesday, you're going to have an approval on the three claims wins for my place. I visited with the trustee for our farm, which is around the area, but I don't want to do that. I'd like you to give her a call, and she would like a copy of the letter that was sent out to everyone, because they have not received it.
Okay.
Um, can I have, hold on one moment, sorry. Barb, that sir is in our land use department, and I'm gonna have you call her, because she would have that letter that was sent out.
Okay, can you give me the phone number?
Yep, it's 319.
Mm-hmm.
472. 3119, thank you.
Okay, perfect, I'll give them a call.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You had the 11, and I'm like, ooh. I'm usually pretty good at that.
I got this shut off, too.
Yeah.
We don't use that much.
I know.
Okay. Right on schedule.
Perfect. We'll start off, I'm Deb Seymour-Gard. I'm the current finance coordinator for MHDS of the East Central Region, and I'm the newly appointed CFO for the Disability Access Point. I'd like to start by thanking Benton County for being such great partners with the East Central Region, and a big appreciation for Haley and Gina and Nancy that I've worked with in the auditor's office for all these years. It's been a very good partnership. I'm here to talk to you today about employment and transfer of assets. But first, I want to speak a little bit about how we arrived at this point. MHDS of the East Central Region formally started business on July 1st of 2014, or fiscal year 2015. And that was per the state mandate that counties would no longer singularly, sorry for the pronunciation, operate mental health disability services, but they would create regions. The East Central Region was created by a 28E agreement encompassing Benton, Gremer, Ucanon, Delaware, Dubuque, Iowa, Johnson, Jones, and Lynn Counties. Funding came from county property taxes, with the counties paying on a per capita basis. The funds the region received were considered the property of the region per Iowa Administrative Code. Those funds were used to pay for services for all of the region's constituents and to reimburse counties for staff wages and benefits, since employees who worked on behalf of the region remained employees of the counties they were working for. In addition, the region also reimbursed counties for office and occupancy expenses. These were reimbursed on a quarterly basis after a county submitted their reimbursement request along with their supporting documentation. Senate File 619, Division 25, Mental Health Funding and Signed by the Governor on June 16th, 2021 significantly changed how the system is funded. Starting with fiscal year 22, it was the last year that any county property taxes were contributed to fund the region. That year funding was part property tax and part state funding. Beginning in fiscal year 23, the entire system has been funded, funding came from the state. Now, we'll fast forward to the current reality. The governor signed House File 2673 on May 15th, 2024, and region-related employment as governed by Iowa Administrative Code 225(c) will end as of June 30th, 25. MHDS of the East Central Region worked diligently this fiscal year to remain a partner in a newly designed system that placed counties into seven districts rather than 13 regions. ECR responded to two RFPs that were released by the state. One was for an administrative. One was for an administrative service organization that we called an ASO for District 7 and one for the Disability Access Point or what we call DAP for all districts across the state. The ASO contract was not awarded to ECR, but they were, we were awarded with a contract for District 7 Disability Access Point. District 7 consists of 14 counties. Unfortunately, Benton County is not included in this district. That being said, we worked very hard to secure employment for those who worked for the region. Some staff members have obtained employment elsewhere, others are staying with the Disability Access Point. We are requesting counties to continue employment for those who work on behalf of the DAP for one year, which will provide us with enough time to establish one employer of record via an RFP process and that would begin July 1st of 26. I'm here to request your county remain as Sarah Wagner's employer for fiscal year 26. Sarah's wages and benefits will be fully reimbursed by the DAP with payments made prior to the start of every month with the exception of July when payment will occur at the beginning of the month and that's due to how the state allocates money. Sarah's wages should equal her current amount plus whatever cost of living adjustment your county is providing to your employees. The Disability Access Point will be operated out of five hubs where staff will be housed. Sarah would be housed out of the Johnson County location so Benton County would no longer need to provide office space for Sarah. There should be no other, no other expenses beyond wages and benefits since we're centralizing all other DAP office and occupancy expenses. And again, we're asking for your consideration to remain the employer of record for Sarah for FY 26. The second order of business is the transfer of some assets that were either directly purchased by the region or for which the region fully reimbursed Benton County. These assets are desperately needed to ensure the DAP's success. At the Regional Governing Board meeting held on May 22nd, the board approved a list of identified assets that they respectfully request the counties' transfer to the DAP for use in the, in the region's DAP contract. Again, the items I'm asking for transfer were fully paid for by the region or reimbursed in full by the region. The region assets in Benton County include the Jeep Renegade and Dodge Journey, one portable printer, one cell phone and possibly three desks that may be needed. Nothing else was identified from Benton County and I'm respectfully asking that I be allowed to work with the county auditor to transfer those assets to ECR. I'm very grateful for the time and partnership we've had during this challenging time for all of us and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
The Jeeps, anyone else want the other one?
Uh, the Dodge Journey. One portable printer.
Cell phone and three desks.
Yes.
No computer?
No, the computers were purchased by your IT department so they remain, they've remained the property of Benton County.
The desk, it's not, it's just the desk, it's not one of those stand desks?
I don't know which ones it is.
I don't know if they have those over there.
The standing desk I purchased myself.
Okay, I didn't.
Say the desk should be.
But they were purchased to the region?
Two in the hub.
No, just mine and Missy's and then Mona's.
Mona's desk came from?
Welter's.
The water shed.
No, we went to Welter's and, and picked out our desks together.
Okay.
Yep.
So they've been moved. Where we thought the desks were, they've been moved around. So the one that was in there got put somewhere else.
Since she, since she left?
Adam had a desk from the WMA.
Oh, so his probably.
That was one of them.
Oh, yes, that went to.
Well, you're going to have to help us identify it.
That leaves two desks, correct? That's no, no big deal.
And I.
And again, they may not even be needed, it depends on the offices that get.
Yeah, they're here, they've just been shuffled. We don't know where they got.
Her desk is still there. Her desk is in the office.
I guess what I can't wrap my head around, you're going to have Sarah work on Iowa City?
Yes.
Take care of Benton County?
No, Benton County will be taken care of by another district.
We're in a different district completely.
What happened is when we formed the district, it went to 14 counties. District 7 encompasses 14 counties. Six of the current ECR counties remain within District 7. Benton, Iowa.
Gremer.
Gremer, thank you.
Yep.
All are in, I think it's CICS.
Yep.
Who is running that district that the county resides in. I have maps if you would like to see the maps.
Could be that map that I gave you guys, the colored one. So the person that is with District 6 also is in charge of District 2 and 3. So Gremer went to 3 and unfortunately Benton went with 6. They didn't keep those three counties and Benton just happens to be one of them.
We don't know if we're going to have somebody here then?
I don't know who it will be. I don't know.
Well, we will have somebody here.
They're, I mean.
I don't know if they'll be housed in Benton County.
No, they won't be housed here.
You'll have some coverage, you'll have coverage.
Yeah, you'll have coverage though. They won't be here.
That's been the difficult part of all of this. The region has, has put together five hubs and I do have that map and those five hubs that were identified, in each one of them, there will be presence in counties that are close to them. So that at least what we call in District Service Navigators, which used to be social workers in our, our area, will be going out to these places to serve people. They won't just be sitting in the office. That's one of the primary reasons we need the vehicles so that people can go out to those areas. The area in Johnson is pretty much to the south. We had lots of workers up at the north end, very few at the south end and Johnson will go down to the Wise, Muscatine and DeMoye Counties. And Johnson has a vehicle which will become the property of, of the Disability Access Point and I'm not sure if there were any others to be, to be there. I look at, and look at it also if I need to, I can make an arrangement with Johnson County Fleet to use that one of their vehicles if, if we run into an issue. But it's really important liability wise that staff are not driving their personal vehicles.
Is that the cell phone you currently have, Sarah?
It's a Johnson County phone.
That's, it's a different one, I think it was Mona's.
Oh, okay.
So Mona's phone is.
I think Mona and Missy had, had cell phones that they had through our county.
Because we have cell phones for the ladies in the hub too.
In the hub, yeah.
Those, those don't have any effect, that was a separate contract anyway.
And those are old.
Yeah, and I'm looking at one contract for all, to transfer all the phones to.
So help me understand, I don't quite get it. Sarah's going to be working out at Johnson County, I was thinking, but yet you want her to stay on the payroll with Benton County?
Correct. That's just for one year so we can transfer everything to one employer of record. So like I will remain an employee of Johnson County for this year, but after this year, it will be somebody else. The problem is the timing. We only had a couple of months to try to figure this out and if you can imagine the workload right now that I and the CO all have because of the CEO's last day is Friday, we're supposed to have everything up and running by July 1st. There are going to be several RFPs that are going to get released probably in the fall, they've got to be written yet. One for the employer of record, one for the fiscal agent. Lynn County is graciously taking the fiscal agent role for this current fiscal year. All of these things had to be set up in a very short time and there is not enough time to set up one employer of record. There would be no responsibility other than Benton County cutting a check for Sarah's wages. We'll reimburse for everything including all her benefits, you know, the county's FICA health insurance, all of that stuff.
Now, two things. First thing is the county attorney, I want him to go over and look over the MOU before I sign because things in the past have come back and haunted me.
Sure.
Without legal advice on one, then the look at this.
That's fine.
That's one thing. The second thing is, my curiosity's from the auditor's office. So I want, she has no budget in our county. So I don't know how this is going to work even though it's.
So.
Explain this maybe Gina to me?
It's all still, still going to be paid out of Fund 6, correct? And Department 60?
Yeah, I mean, it would still come out of the same, same.
So we did allow for some.
Stay out of that.
Oh, boy. So we still do have some budget because we have to allow for accruals. So we do have, I mean, because what you're saying, now my question, I have additional questions after this for, are in the auditor's office, but we have some money in Fund 2 for like inpatient and stuff like that, diagnosis, but what you're saying, that money we would not need because we're only paying wages and it benefits, correct?
The only, only in, only commitment expenses you're still responsible for are anything related to substance use.
Okay.
Anything that's mental health related is supposed to be paid for by the ASO.
Okay, because I mean, we're, we got to talk about spending authority, even if you guys would have approved this and I'm sure there's fund balances that you could do for budget amendments and stuff like that. So what you're saying is like the diagnostic, the inpatient and that stuff, the share of transports, that would still be, have to be used for the budget.
Correct.
Because that overall budget is 17,500 for the fiscal year 26 that was requested. So that is not applicable to be used for this. With that being said, we did use, we did budget some money for, in Fund 6 for salaries because of accruals and that sort of thing. Overall, in Fund 6, it's $173,000 in Fund 6. That's, I, I don't know comparable what she's at for, you know, wages and FICA and all that stuff currently, but I'd have to put pen and paper specifically for her because what is in the budget now has more than Sarah, obviously, so. But that's overall in Fund 6, which is mental health, for that. So I don't know how that would compare if you would lump that just all for Sarah if that would be.
But we're going to get paid back at the beginning of every month.
But you have to have that spending authority. You still have to have that in your budget, yes. I think that's where budgets get confusing because it's great that we get reimbursed and so people are like, well, I don't have to put it in the budget. You do. You have to have that spending authority. So that's where people are like, well, we don't need to budget it because we get reimbursed. It doesn't quite work that way. So we have to have that in the budget first for, and yes, I've worked with Deb for quite a few years on this and we've always had, you know, we've had questions, Deb's even come into our office and we've solved it out. So I have no problem if that's who. Would you be the person that we would send that information to?
Yes.
Monthly? So I mean, we already do that now. So in our office, as far as that goes, that would stay the same.
So you're saying that there is spending authority.
There is.
July 1.
There is some spending authority, like I said, I'd have to do comparable just for one employee to see if all of that would encompass and cover. Because I don't know, you know, what additional, like I said, I'm comparing overall budget, not specific to one person.
And then at that, we, I mean, we still have to close out all our accruals and, and those types of things.
Yeah, you still have other things, you know, that's not, like she said, accumulating accruals and that sort of thing. So I mean, that's going to deduct off of that as well and I don't think there should be much accruals, but you never know.
Yeah, a lot of the, a lot of the dynamics changed since we worked on that because Mona left and we had, when we created that budget, a lot of it was payout for benefits and that's a significant amount of, amount of funding. And if needed, would it be possible to do a budget amendment down the road to, to take care of anything that we might be minus, which would allow the spending authority?
Now, my question is since, as far as the auditor's office goes, where, you know, where, is she keeping a timesheet with us? Like she's still considered a Benton County employee so she would fall under the Benton County handbook?
Yes.
Like I guess for our standpoint, you know, we need to know that. Like if she's got an issue in Johnson County, is she a Benton County employee, like does she fall under our?
She would fall still under you. Every, all of us who are working for our individual counties are still subject to whatever the county's policies are.
I mean, I just want that clarified as well, I think is important.
She could log in then, right?
Exactly, and with those going time and attendance, it's perfect. It's 100% workable, but that's where I just think it needs to be specified in public too. You, if you would approve it, approve this, you are our employee housed somewhere else. So I mean, I don't want that differentiation just be assumed that, well, she works in Johnson County, she's a Johnson County employee.
For the, for the first year. Bottom line is, we have 34, 36 region employees?
Yeah, but about 20 of them are going to end up with the DAP and it may be a little bit less. I think there were, there's 12 Disability Service Navigators, one Funding Navigator, three in the C-suite and three program managers and three clerical.
These folks have done nothing other than they're having to go through a reorganization. It's got nothing to do with basically them, they're just kind of getting pushed out.
Yeah, we're really trying hard to keep people who have been so dedicated to our work for more than 20 years, a lot of them.
It might be Ray.
Benton County Auditor, or Supervisors, sorry.
Supervisors office.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, my name is Fagan, I'm a reporter with Iowa's News Now. I'm looking out to ask if you might have contact information for anybody in the Communications Department?
Of.
Are you talking to Sheriff's Office?
Uh, yes, the Sheriff's Office. I live beside the Communications Service Center, that department.
I can give you their phone number to the Sheriff's Office?
Okay.
Three one nine?
Oh, I think, are you in the Human Resources Building?
Uh, we're in the Service Center.
Were you just here with equipment?
Uh, I could, yes, I was.
Um, are you still here?
Yeah, yeah.
Just drive over there.
I'm sitting right outside the Human Resources Office.
We'll just get you the information here in a little bit.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So they're getting all, all moved around and things and they've done nothing other than their job.
So this is basically to buy you some extra time so you can get all this stuff in together before you actually.
Correct. They'll buy us a year to get everything under one employer. So at that juncture, Sarah would no longer be a Benton County employee, she would be an employee of whoever is the employer of record for.
For that district?
For the district.
Okay. So Ray sent me a question, he's our county attorney. He asked like, so is she working for the region in Johnson? That's what he said, what is our liability as far as like that goes? Is it just like? That's why he said, what is our liability, as far as like that goes? Is it just like salary?
It's just the salary and benefits. As far as liability insurance, the, the District, Disability Access Point covers liability insurance. And that's through ICAP, where most of us get our insurance.
Okay.
Make it easier if I just let my insurance over to my husband, and then that fixes some of this?
That's a personal choice now.
I was gonna say, that, I, we're not talking that.
Like, that kind of stuff?
No, no. I, I think what he was talking about is probably transporting back and forth and liability on.
Probably, yeah, yeah, so like, um, yeah, because he just, literally just followed up, because I'm sure, hi Ray, you're probably watching. Sorry, I'm so sorry, I had to. All right, uh, we need to research, he's like, we need to research just what our liability would look like before agreeing to the proposal and stuff.
I will. Do you have a copy of the MOU with you?
I sure do.
I have one.
And you have one?
Yeah, Gina and I happened to walk in the building at the same time, so it was perfect timing. So, and I just, I mean, we literally just saw it this morning, so we haven't had time to really sit down.
Four weeks' time is enough time for you to look at this?
To, just because, like, next week, Ray's gonna be the only one in office, because we have our, the County Attorney's Conference. Yep, yep, so like.
Forgot, okay. So can we get a motion to table this off for two weeks?
I would make a motion to table this for.
Time out. Well, I'm just thinking for fiscal year end and insurance, her personal insurance information as well. Because two weeks, if you're looking at that, it's the seventeenth. I'm just thinking for payroll and stuff like that, because I know pay, insurance usually comes out the second, or it equally comes out and we pay the second. So we kinda have to know for payroll purposes, you know, do we, we pay a month ahead for the health insurance? So do we deduct that out of Sarah's paycheck, I guess, is where I'm wanting for clarification, for us to send payroll to bank currently?
How's it currently being handled? Like, just like, just like that? Because like.
Do I keep her on the insurance tentatively in, in this process? Because we have a deadline to the bank for payroll, so that's where, if we do, I kinda have to give Alyssa direction on that. I don't want to potentially mess anything up for anybody.
And if anything changes, we can always reimburse.
We can always do something different.
And do that, too. But I think it just avoid confusion.
Just keep her on.
Just keep it like this.
Can I explain something? That, this is my understanding from my county's perspective. That insurance payment is still paid in, in June. If she wasn't gonna be an employee and would carry over to July, the region will still reimburse that June payment.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I don't want to mess anything up for employee.
I hope that helped.
Yes, thank you.
Derek, we're looking for the seventeenth then? Today's the third.
Yeah, seventeenth is great. I can't think of anything.
Deb, do you have a date or a time that works better for you on the seventeenth that you know off the top of your head?
Did you want me to come?
I don't know. Do you want her to come? Sorry, I guess I shouldn't have just assumed.
I mean, I can pull my calendar.
Are you close?
I live in North Liberty.
Oh, that ain't so far.
No, I just, and it was really funny today, because I'm not taking three eighty. That place is a mess. I drove up nine sixty-five and came over. It's a lot less stressful. I hear sirens going out there every single day. I live near the interstate.
Tell me the mic to drive up and down that stretch.
I hate that stretch. I am free on the seventeenth, if you would like me to, to come.
I can be smart, and if there's more questions to be answered.
We'll have.
I'm happy, I'm happy to do that.
You're the person to do it, not me.
I don't have access to what that looks like currently, but.
Okay, I was gonna say.
I, how about this? I have your information.
You just contact me.
I'll work with it with her and communicate it through. Does that work for a time?
That'd work.
I just think, since she's coming farther away, I like a time.
Yeah, yeah, put her on as a time.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, not a problem.
So did Ron make a motion to table?
Uh, I'd, I'd make a motion to table. I would also say that, as a personal note, like to thank Sarah for, and Deb, because we've worked with both of them through the region for years. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Okay, and call for a vote on the table.
Tippit, aye.
Team, aye. Vols, aye.
Thank you for your time today. Appreciate it. It's a great deal.
You explained it much better than Sarah and I were ever gonna get it done.
Myron.
Here about a week.
Or two ago, I was, got an email from the DOT, learning that I-380 interchange at Urbana, that the bridge over the interstate needs bridge joint repair work done to it. And they are proposing to do a project on that next fiscal year, hopefully having plans put together for the DOT's November wedding of this year. Their proposed aspect of the project would be to close that overpass. The on and off ramps would still be open, but the bridge would be closed to do that bridge deck joint repair. I asked the question about, my mindset was, could that be done maybe a lane side type of deal? And their response was, being able to close it completely, potentially the project could be duration weeks instead of months. I don't think this is a lengthy project. My vision of his answer might be, maybe this makes it five to seven weeks in length versus two to two and a half months in length type of deal. They would post detour using the interchange to the north and the interchange to the south for people to get east and west sides. All of the expenses being covered by the DOT, but the road surface is actually ours to take care of for debris removal, spill removal type of deal, so it's, the road, so to speak, is in our system. The bridge is their responsibility. So they have a DOT, their standard pre-construction agreement for a road project agreeing to their terms. And I've, like all of, or like the other ones, similar to the interchange projects down at thirty and two eighteen and twenty-one, DOT is doing all of the cost, doing all of the work. My only question back to them this morning, if that did turn into a lengthy project and if the rock roads got heavier used up there as a route, as a way around, that they would participate in that schedule. They have in the past. I don't expect that to be any different for this project. But outside of that, I can't envision any issues.
You're still just able to get on the interstate and off the interstate there.
Correct. You just won't be able to get directly from the west side to the east side or vice versa.
You just have to go up a mile out of your way and back through. That's pretty simple.
Certainly, if you are wanting to get from the east side to the west side, it's a short drive up to the next exit and around and back or down one fifty, it would be. Getting from the west to the east side, you're gonna have to go down to the Blue's Bottom, Blue's Access Exit at Center Point and come back. I wonder if Fifty Third, one fifty, Fifty Third Street and Thirty Second Avenue, which winds around by Penn Storage and the RV Park, would potentially see heavier traffic. I don't know, but. But like all of the agreements, the DOT requests approval from the Board of Supervisors, with signature from the chairperson and the auditor.
I would make the motion to approve the DOT agreement, twenty twenty-five dash C dash zero zero eight, for the, the deck joint repair on Fifty Fourth Street, going over I-380, and that'd be, I think they call it, it'd be at the KC South?
Yes.
Second. Okay, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Team, aye. Vols, aye.
That's all I have.
Do you need the seal?
Don't think so.
They're pretty decent today.
Yes.
Okay, I got about a couple things I wanna touch on. Florida Town Corner, by the Friday night, and the light is on.
Okay, that's good. I've asked a couple people, because now that the days are getting longer. I had two people tell me they were there at eight, maybe fifteen, but it's not dark enough yet at that hour.
Uh, the north one comes on about fifteen seconds sooner than the south one.
Okay.
They're working. So my question is, how's the stop sign coming?
There, when they were ordered, he said four to, the email said four to six weeks. And we're in that period. I think I'm at three or four weeks on that timeline type of deal. I haven't seen it yet. I think that much.
Okay.
But they've been ordered, I don't know, three weeks ago or something like that.
I got a text from the neighbors, they're owner of the home.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that was one thing. Oil tree, probably coming on that. Have they started?
We started last week. The first day, we had mechanical issues with our distributor and we ended up having to, we were going to do things south of thirty, we ended up having to go back to the shop here a bit and do some work and did some stuff around here instead, later in the day, to empty that distributor. We had another mechanical problem a couple other times with that, but we're at least halfway done with first shots or a little over halfway done.
Really?
Yeah. We've had two, three full days, plus that short one, so.
Last but not least, I got an email from an accident at Oak Grove Church here. They suggested we should maybe put some red flashing lights. And they even suggested rumble strips. And I thought, eh, we're not going that route, in my opinion. The residential's on the new pavement on the road going to Center Point, you know what? We just did here, what, a year ago?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, there's rumble strips in advance of the stop sign.
Both of them?
Coming both directions.
Really?
And the stop sign near the Oak Grove Church has a red flashing light, huh?
Okay. Then how about one on the other side?
The other side does not have a red flashing light, but those of those stop signs have the rumble strips in advance of the stop sign.
Maybe that's what they.
They were put in with the asphalt project last.
I haven't been there to check it out. I'll check it out and get back to you then. Because evidently, the accident was from when the person was coming off the butter street it is, uh, by Kestner's there, doing pavement. They didn't stop the way it sounded.
But yeah, we installed rumble strips on both sides of that intersection in advance of those two stop signs.
Now, the red flashing light, you just go on top of the stop sign, just a small battery one? If you've got an extra one at the shop, where'd you get that one on the east side of that intersection?
If we had an extra one, I don't think we do, but I will find out.
Right. That's all I got.
As I was cruising yesterday, I went to, I'd not met the newest clerk in Wolford. I left you out of conversation.
Well, you're one better than I am. I haven't talked to the new clerk either, so. I give her, I give my pay her every month, so. City sewer and garbage, you get to pay it up late, and I dropped that off, but.
That's all I had then. Thanks.
See you, Myron. Great work.
I don't have any. I had Johnson's second half.
Okay, unfinished business. Got nothing. I will. Public comment, if you're a known public care buddy?
Last man standing, uh.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
So moved, yes.
Call for a vote on that one.
Tippit, aye.
Team, aye.
Vols, aye.
We're done.